Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sam Slenda, I'm chairman of the Village Physical Planning Board. This time I'm on for the Village Physical Planning Board of July 18th, 2024. The order of the Secretary of State, Rocco Lozada, the form.
Pita Kajera, here.
Ezra Holly.
Here.
Anthony Malado.
Okay, something new. We are now being on TV. So I don't know what channel we'll be able to watch ourselves on.
Youtube just for now.
So, but. Another thing I want to bring up that we will not be meeting in August. We will not have a forum. So our next scheduled meeting will be on September 19th. Okay? Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June 20th, 2024. Second?
Second.
Have a motion second and fourth, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, Harry. First item on the agenda is 1131 Main Street, E V Spa.
E V Spa. Medical spa?
Yeah, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Uh, my name is Dion, I'm from New York Science. We're going to be putting a sign for the medical spa. Uh, you guys requested that we change it from internally lit channel letters to blue snake lighting. So I have the changes here. I also have samples.
Do you have a pretty picture of what the lights look like? Uh, do you laugh? These are, these are the.
That's just this thematic for the blue snake lighting.
Uh, these are the actual color samples.
So those is the, are the material that the letters are made of. Aluminum, acrylic, and then the gold line.
Okay, this was the goal that we were questioning last.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Dave, comments?
No, no.
I will meet some of your.
Yeah, the sign is fine, it's just the comments from the, from the members last time.
Okay. And you, and you, you're happy with the light pictures?
Yeah.
Comments?
Oh.
Hey, I'm entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second and fourth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, Harry. You're all set?
Oh, thank you so much, guys.
You too. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for 10, 10, 10, 12, and 12, 18 Main Street. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, Harry. Have a client, please come forward, your secretary, make for the record.
Sure, I'm Steve Welland, Welland Architecture, representing Ryan McGrath, the owner of 10, 10, 10, 12, and 10, 18 Main Street.
Want to fill us in?
Sure.
Fill the public in. Anybody from the public who could see the center?
So since our last presentation, uh, we added a little bit more information from what we could get from the, uh, the village department for any existing utilities. Uh, we're working on an engineer's report about the, uh, segmenting of water supply. So that's currently being prepared. Uh, we revised the travel aisle, uh, to show it just in the driving area, and now only the grass street is just going to be in the parking areas.
Not in the driving part?
That's right, yeah, just in the driving part, it's going to be asphalt, and just in the parking area where we're expanding it, that's going to be the grass street. And then we added some more details to show that the grass street can support vehicular traffic as well as like emergency vehicles. And then I think the last comment was parking space 18, we're showing that now as land banks. And then just really just showing just from our console.
Engineering, you had questions on this?
All of our comments were pretty, pretty much addressed, we just had a couple, uh, you know, belt suspenders type of comments for the plans that can clarify some of the notes and, um, uh, the details you have for the grass street, so some clarification, nothing that was, uh, would end up in any sort of making a change at the point.
Okay, does anybody in the public have any comments or questions on this project at this time? Victoria, because this, you have any legal?
So, uh, we talked about this at the last meeting, um, there are now various cross easements across the parcel, and the parcel, I believe is now a single parcel, so all of my concerns have been addressed.
Okay. Again, any comments of the audience? Going once, going twice. I'll entertain a motion to have a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second and fourth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, Harry. Uh, you have, uh, there is comments, Victoria?
I, I do, and Sarah has prepared a resolution for the board tonight as well. Um, I don't know if everyone has a copy of it. Um, but essentially she drafted a resolution to grant site plan approval and had to meet through the convention that we've got. Um, it says now therefore be of thought the planning board hereby grants amended site plan approval to the project as described and shown on the application material, subject to compliance with the following conditions and any other requirements which must be met by law. One, the following conditions shall be fulfilled prior to the signing of the site plan drawing by the planning board chairman or other authorized entity. One, the agreement shall be committed for review and approval of the planning board attorney. Um, we can either consider that comment satisfied or we can read it now. B, a note shall be added to the plan such that the existing fence will be maintained and replaced if it is in disrepair or damage. C, compliance with the comments in the Village Physical Consultant Engineers memorandum dated July 18th, 2024, the satisfaction of the village engineering consultant. Um, D, in according to section 171-158 of the Village of New Orleans, the applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all professional consultation costs incurred by the village in connection with this matter. The applicant shall be up to date in terms of the payment of all known due costs prior to the signing of the plan by the chairman of the planning board. Um, and then it should subject to the usual standard conditions about, uh, field inspections, future model of the catering, et cetera.
All right, then Sarah's, all the Sarah's comments in the previous item satisfied, it's also right.
Okay, here's that one.
Right. Teresa, comments? Okay. Dave, you have any? Engineering, then you're.
We're, we're just talking about, um, the easements, so you know, we can, we can, we'll keep the commission and that will allow the first answer to change.
The others, comments?
Well, we should ask if anyone in the public had any comments?
I already did, I already closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, then we can act on this resolution. Correct?
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the resolution for 10, 10, 10, 12, and 10, 18 Main Street.
Second.
Have a motion second and fourth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, then I'm going to need a revised resolution. And then I'll sign. Welcome to the Village Physical. Next item on the agenda. Report is 701, 703, Route 9, Go Health Urgent. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Jeremy, I'm Charlie Lively, with K A Consulting Consultants, and we are representing the landlord and the family, um, on this particular application. So I can just say the route overview, um, I think everyone familiar with this property, this is a corner of Route 52 and, um, Route 9. Um, the applicant is proposing to move into existing space, so it's approximately 2,700 square feet, it's on the first floor. Uh, most of you might know it's the space where AT&T is, and then it's the vacant space next to it. Um, the tenant is Go Health, and, uh, we did provide you with a letter summarizing what the reviews is, but I'll just read it, but we can say you understand what it is. Um, they offer urgent care services, so for their, for non-life threatening illnesses. It's, um, essentially an in-between between your, um, primary service provider and the ER. Um, so it's provides a review from the ER, um, and also to provide services for people when your primary condition is occupied. Um, it's seven days a week, 365 days a year, there are holidays, it's limited hours, but, um, predominantly it's between eight and eight, um, again, 70s a week. They generally, this is their summary, is provide care for allergies, asthma, home control, COVID testing, and their rapid testing, uh, infections, flu shots, um, comprehensive care for illnesses, um, but they can also do onsite testing services including X-rays, um, sports and camp physicals, rashes and so forth, and telemedicine, um, there's no changes to the outside of the building, so it's all interior fit up, um, for the space. This is, uh, required site plan is not a use permit, um, for this application, so that's available for you. We did receive a copy of, um, Sarah's comments, and so I understand that there are some changes that need to be made to the plan. I recall they're mostly ministerial for the maintenance, we have to upgrade the parking, um, we have a lot on the plan if anything needs to be corrected. So predominantly there's some ministerial changes, unless obviously the board has some additional comments. We will upgrade that parking summary, so with most applications where you have a multi-tenant space, we like to provide the existing tenants and all requirements for the code, so we'll do that for you. We weren't able to review this application before we came in, but we'll, we'll provide that for you, so we can show you that there's sufficient parking both on the site and for the code, there were the variants at this point brought in for parking on the site, so we'll incorporate that into it. I think we're just having sufficient parking. There's one provider, there's one medical technician, um, and there's one medical assistant, so there's three people there on annual payment time. Um, so the parking requirements are very well. You know, we're hoping that it's successful, I think it's a good way to use for the site. And if there's any questions on that.
Can we get a copy, Sarah?
I can read them if you want me to. I'm sorry, here. I think broadly she, when you hit it, that the application needs to go to such a kind of planning, so we're hoping that we can make these changes and then perhaps as part of the whole plans, the submission of that becoming planning simultaneously, so that by the time we get them after the next meeting, maybe we have our comments back for the planning. Um, reflect, modify the lot line realignment, so there was a modification that was done that wasn't accurately reflected on the site plan. Correctly list the tenants, um, in space. Upgrade the parking table, so it shows, as I said, all the existing usage on the site, and then reflects, you know, correlate it to the actual specific requirements in the code. Um, there's different requirements, whether it's office or restaurant, or bank. Um, and the spaces for square foot column, the parking table has to be revised to reflect the requirements of section 177, which is your apartment requirements. That was her comment. She also, sorry, she also asked that the narrative be expanded to provide operational characteristics of the urgent care facility, including hours of operation and the number of patients per hour, and then we'll add the, um, the number of employees that are going to be there in one year, because that's the threshold for parking.
Victoria?
Yeah, I don't have any legal comments per se that about the issue of the, the lots not being an accurate reflection.
So are secret codes as a type?
It would be a type two secret action, because it's reused with an existing facility.
So that'd be the short form, right?
Yep, whatever they submitted is fine, you don't have to do any third review.
Third.
You can submit it short form, so you have that. Part of that statement.
Yeah. Dave, you have any comments? No. Engineering?
Our two comments were based on, uh, around the, uh, the plan itself, the information that was submitted that, um, Sarah had already alluded to, or showing a correct lot line. The base plan that was used for the site plan, there was no, uh, map reference notes on the plan as to where that information came from, but it looked like it probably came from, uh, an outdated prior site plan, because that, uh, the more recent lot line wasn't picked up. Um, so that was just, just clarifying that and, and showing the map reference and, um, we would just noted for the board that typically, um, the board requires all the existing conditions to be shown, um, for site plans. Um, you know, we typically ask for underground utilities to even be shown, um, and some, when there's, uh, site improvements proposed, typically, uh, showing topography also. Um, I don't think that any site improvements are proposed with this application, it appears to just be a, a change of occupancy, um, in addition to the special use permit. So I don't know if the board wants to discuss whether they waive those prior, um, requirements, um, to simplify the application, since it's just a, um, a change of occupancy, or since it's a special use permit also, uh, to include, um, you know, formal boundary survey, or at least reference, um, uh, a file of map that, uh, and should provide that to, to the board for, for the record that shows the, uh, the the survey boundary lines and existing conditions. Um, so.
We can provide that.
It should be relatively easy to do.
Sure, absolutely, we'll get that file now that this is completed.
Sounds good. Um, our, our only other comment was just to provide a narrative on the change in, uh, watering super demand, uh, for any change in occupancy that's, uh, was the, the village typically requires.
Sure.
And that includes a, uh, an evaluation of the, the backflow preventer, um, the cross connection control. So if there's a backflow preventer already installed in that, in that building, if, if there's any change to the, uh, degree of, uh, hazard, um, and that, that can be coordinated with the, the water department, they'll determine what the, uh, uh, that degree of hazard is for this particular use, particular, particular use, and whether or not a double check valve or an arcades is required, so.
Okay.
Teresa, have any comments?
Um, so this, you're going to, uh, combine two open sites. Correct. Okay. But it was, was one of them last time, correct? I asked him a bit earlier, so he said the vacant ward was being stuff at one point, and then after that, it was, um, I think originally, originally it was, it was a restaurant.
Oh, wait, wait, that's where.
Okay.
It's all there.
Sure.
Yeah, but after that, wasn't it, you know? It was, it was a, I don't know.
It was a, yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, they just kept renovating the building. Um, and it's not going to be any, um, like medical waste, it'll be all contained and shipped out and stuff.
Yeah, we can put that in the narrative, just so that you confirm that they comply with all the medicals.
Okay. There is no urgent care in the village. It's, uh, I can, that's two, signal, you know, the numbers. Yeah, 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 definitely.
Does, uh, would the board at all have to, uh, re-iron any of this?
I don't know, I can find out if they have to issue any permits soon. They have to issue permits. All right. You know, okay, we'll find out. I would imagine that they have that on license, it's not a uniform person. They have pretty few location factors. It's small.
Yeah.
Well, would, from E to E, they would probably run through the staff, but at any one time it'll be for it. Yeah.
What's that pronounced?
Yes. Okay.
Are you have a few things you have to do here?
We're just talking, um, because we're looking at a prior site plan. Were there any conditions on the prior approval that we should take a look at and be aware of?
So we, we got involved late, so what we're going to do is survive a little bit of submission, and then any, what I usually like to do is take the approved plan, the last approved plan, and give that to you, so you have that as part of the record. So I think we'll include that in the next mission, and then I can check and see, um, if there were any conditions.
Yeah, we just want to know if there's any notes on the plan, or, you know, anything in the resolution on the prior approval that we need to be aware of or modify.
Sure, okay. Okay, so when I resubmit, I'll give you the approved plans, I have the approval submission, just watching. So as far as kind of planning, since I think, um, is it something that the board wants to make a submission that, um, can be referred over to the kind of planning?
Uh, yes, the kind of planning will just turn around today. Too many questions here.
Okay, all right, we want to agree to that.
So when you come back on the September 19th, review it, then, uh.
Oh, there's no meeting in August?
No meeting in August.
Okay.
Then, uh, we'll send it up to county planning at that time, unless there's something else standing.
And is our public hearing required for this?
I.
On all site plans?
Yeah.
Could we, could we set that for the 19th? Do we need to set that for the 19th, or do you want to set that for the October, you'll be ready? Sorry, will we be ready? Um, I would hope so, I hope that we can do everything, I, I think if you can't have it on the 19th, then we might as well just set it on the 19th to get after what you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion that we have a public meeting, a public hearing on this project on September 19th?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, uh, unusual, this side of the world.
Next item on the agenda, 982 Main Street. 5420 Dispenser. We have a fifth place on forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Paul McGann, I'm here in Reston, Ohio, seeing, you know, I'm proposing a legal declaration on the, the fact that we're on Main Street, and also have Mike Wilson, who is the, uh, leader.
Who want to tell us about it?
So, uh, last time we were here, uh, you guys had asked for some, uh, for some independent evaluation of parking spaces, as well as talk about the hours of operation. Uh, we did do an independent evaluation, I believe in spaces is about 430 spaces. Maximal peak time when we reach them on 70%. Uh, you know, we oversee them operating for licenses and, uh, places across the state currently. Uh, so we have a pretty good understanding of how to get the customer in there now. Uh, it's quickly possible to mediate the use of those spaces, uh, even during peak times, I don't expect us to be over 80% in total of spaces being occupied. Uh, as far as hours of operation is concerned, uh, we are proposing to be open, uh, nine to nine Monday through Saturday, and then ten to seven on the same Sunday. So giving, you know, uh, it looks like that's in line with the hours of the other, um, paths in the same, uh, building and space, so we want to make sure we keep that flow of traffic, uh, and that, you know, the same, same pattern.
Have you got the approval of the state?
Yes, we've been provisionally, uh, approved, uh, and we had the location already provisionally, uh, allocated. Uh, now it's just up to us to actually start the construction process, uh, get into code and compliant, um, you know, with appropriate vaulting, vaults, the eventing services, the security, and making it safe, safe for the public to be able to.
So the state, has the state, somebody from the state come down and said?
Well, they put it at the site. They, they can't until we're actually ready for that, so we have to start building out prior to this thing actually saying, you know.
I mean, have they physically come down and determined is there a school, is there a church, or?
Yes, we've, we've, we've done the online application, which does it automatically, we've done checks with the library, see what school, as well as, um, any type of public library, church, you know, pray, pray, listen to prayer.
And what's the distance, how close that will be?
It's about 100 feet by the state.
Victoria, you have any legal comments? Or are you familiar with the state's rulings on this?
Yeah, uh, we're familiar with the state regulations. Um, for our purposes, you're just treating it as a change of use site plan application. Um, the, the questions for the board tonight are, are, are you satisfied with the information that they provided you on the parking numbers and on their operations? Um, at the last meeting, we had asked for information, inspected sales, hard data, about what percentage online, how many tickets an hour, what is the time? Parking will also look at that time, so, you know, reviewing that information and deciding, um, if we can. I don't know.
And I can also update on like the online percentages, so as I mentioned, you have the operating locations. We do about 50% of our sales, uh, via online, we actually just launched an app last week, so we'll actually make it even quicker. Our turnaround time from the time with a customer, like place on online, when it's actually in the store, it's less than three minutes. The time they come into the doors, get their ID scan, we will oversee their product, they're, they're out of the building, I think.
What, what about percentage of delivery they get?
Uh, at the moment, at the moment, we're not proposing delivery to this location, um, we have a specific.
Said in the, um.
What?
It was in the summary that when the engineer gave the information said that you had to go to, I don't know. There's something.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, if if something has changed, I can give you reference to uh a location in Cleveland, York. Uh, we do about eight percent of our sales in the local.
So majority of it is. Put it around line, come grab it.
Correct.
And then the rest is walking.
Yeah, so I'd say, you know, it's about forty percent actually in store, whether actually coming in, talking to a bartender who would then educate them on the product and inform them on whatever information they want. It's about forty percent, fifty percent is all on the internet or through the app and then, you know, less than that percent uh is still.
Um. I have a question for the engineer and uh Victoria.
Yeah.
Um, so why one of my concerns is just like the online ordering is cool, but I get it, it's convenient and but we along that storefront there, you already have the issue with UPS store and people parking in no parking zone and they're driving, you know, I I just worry about the safety of pedestrians in the area where people come and boom, parking, running in and out and just a continuous because they're going to park right front comes by the sidewalk. I mean, it's, I know you guys can't control that. I don't know what kind of tools we have at our defense. I know it's private property, but I mean, it's it that's what's going to happen. I mean, I know there's a lot of parking, no doubt about it, but it's all away from the from the store. That's why the the lots that are empty are away because everybody wants to get to the gym and UPS store. So and they're already doing that. So I I just anticipate that when you're doing grab and go, it's going to get to an increase. So you're going to have a lot of people just kind of lined up parking basically illegally. I mean, and unsafe.
Well, I mean, it's it's hard to plan for people not following the rules. But we could talk about maybe designating a certain number of spaces as parking for the facility and having them put signage up. Or, you know, if that addresses your concern. And that would be what what landlord. Well, they would, I mean, they they have to, they're here on behalf of the landlord. So we could go back and tell them to go back and talk to the landlord.
Yeah, maybe maybe more than willing to facilitate whatever.
Are are you allowed to do something or do you bring it out to the car?
No, you can't do any curbs.
Can't do any curbs.
They does a lot. So they have to physically come in the store, we have to scan everyone's ID, make sure they're pointing one. And then at that point, you know, let's try to pick up the prepaid product.
I mean, you could say when people are doing ordering that, you know, make sure you park in spaces.
Yeah, there's there's.
Like here's with UPS, I'm sorry, with UPS, somebody people are carrying boxes and stuff. Everybody's carrying.
And and their mindset is I'm in and out.
Yeah.
So it's not an issue. So this is in and out.
Yeah.
So I just, I mean, I it's going to happen. Not, you know, you're not going to see this, but um. How many people do you see on average at your toy location in a day?
Hundred, a hundred and thirty.
And that's Saturday too, like.
Yeah. That's average out, I mean, we, you know.
And it's eight out, eight twelve out, eight, what's out?
Nine nine. And on Sunday.
So it's like ten fifteen people.
So where he's going more.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I'm going to walk.
What uh?
To the path, people walk.
What is uh like, is there like a peak time that you notice that you're able to pinpoint like that, like?
It's typically the drive in and out. So the, you know, the
You're asking.
Nine to tenish and then four and seven. So I hear you. Um, but, you know, it honestly, there's really no measuring of who wants to consume cannabis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And on like a bar or restaurant, you can see that they don't.
Yeah, they're just sitting, hanging out.
Yeah.
What about like, I mean, you know, like the curiosity, who he moves? We we can't really just browse, you know what I mean? Like people just coming in, just looking around.
Sure, uh, I mean, that's, you know, many ones will be window shopping.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, as far as even looking into the establishment, there's specific guidelines of the apple. And, you know, the public can't see in, you have to go through one entry door and then two others or you're, you know, you're.
You have to, is there, there's supposed to be somebody standing outside.
Yeah, so so there's the kind of just like you're preparing and entering.
That's true.
Whatever, it has to be a a landing spot before you actually get to the general, you know, cannabis dealing area, you know. Uh, this way.
Do you really have any? Is she with the Troy store?
No.
Is that the closest one from here?
Uh, we have west side, west side of Manhattan. Yeah, absolutely.
Troy is more.
In line with like fifty minute, yes. Uh, no, I mean, we've been open since December seventh. Uh, you know, we're in a Walmart part of the place, somewhere in um um spaces. Uh, you know, there's a spectrum there and so links out like this moving in and again, so. Um, and, you know, we have a good flow of traffic. We're able to kind of get them in, get them out, and we have security and outside and inside. So it's, you know, there's ever I'm like tricking when you're in high cannabis now. Fight, so it's pretty, it's everything.
Don't you go to the Mexican place.
Yeah, yeah, but so.
Well, I mean, I I that's really the only concern I have was was that issue with the I just didn't know um.
Yeah, so if you can get spaces designated.
Yeah, we can definitely work that out.
You know.
Sure. My name is Michael, Michael, so I've built quite a few stores and I have the DATHY contract. I'm building social and safe as well and that more tighter ones as well. So those in process and all that thing, things we've done some of sometimes. So if you have any other questions on that aspect, but we have made the in the these provisions of having the same parking because we don't want that traffic, you know, and the hindrance in front of that, we could definitely do that.
Some other comments. Um, the board should decide whether it wants to accept the site plan. It doesn't really meet all the traffic requirements that you normally have. But at the very least, I think we want to integrate the last time we did a site plan for this plaza, the parking information that we have and just have them add to it what this use was. I mean, I don't remember what storage replacing, but.
It's a.
Updating updating the table for the study and then swapping out the karate information for your own.
Okay. I saw your children talking about that. It was submitted that it was originally a private. The.
It's in here. It's in the slot.
Yeah, I I didn't.
That was in uh the water and sewer demand letter from the engineer.
Yeah.
So what we're talking about is updating the actual site plan. This will be the documented record on the approval.
Okay.
Yeah, we're so good. People, well, it's it's it'll be more than that. I would recommend oiling the the village's records to get the prior men, the prior proof site plan for the plaza. And that'll have all of the prior requirements on it, the parking calculation um and the allocation towards all the stores. That's what we're talking about, taking that information and then integrating it with this site plan so that all the prior approval conditions remain. You know, the 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 parking calculations remain the same. You know, it'll have on there, you know, for the karate facility, how many parking, how many parking stalls were allocated? So it'll just be swapping your facility out for the karate facility and make sure that 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 is adequate.
Gotcha. So that will put this up, you know, sixteen days to come back for that.
Oh.
We're paying rent there too.
We have a public hearing.
We have a public hearing. Yeah. I mean, I think the public hearing was uh closed about a back and they got really excited a little bit.
Right.
So we still, because they weren't, nobody came. Right, they didn't come. Unfortunately, you know.
When was that?
Uh, back in March, April.
Yeah.
On May. Yeah.
All right.
The park here was opened in November, continued to January, and then it was closed. Going down, then we showed up for the application.
Can I reach out to the city if there's more information, there's a certain person I can reach out directly with. I just live in California for this, so that's why I'm just trying to get this thing resolved as much as possible, so.
So information, you mean on on the site?
Contact at the city, I mean, the city, is there a certain person?
I mean, for, I want, if you wanted to talk about the getting the prior plan, it's Jimmy.
Okay. Awesome. She signed that. I guess so. Okay, okay.
She she will have a copy of the the website plan inside, you can probably email it if you have a video.
Okay. Okay.
So the board's can decide if they're ready to send here in person number, then we give them how you said. Their numbers. Yes.
Motion? Do you want to do a public hearing in September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they have to understand, you know.
Everything has to be written.
I I will get that done.
Has to be written.
Yes.
You have to have all the information.
Signage.
Yeah.
With samples.
Yeah.
And all that, right?
I entertain a motion to instead of public hearing on September nineteenth.
A move.
Second?
Motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote Harry. All right, we'll see you on September nineteenth. Thank you so much. We don't have anything to send up to them, do we?
Well, I mean, you have this.
Let me send this up and see what they say.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So uh we need a motion to send. We have the physical. Applications are ready to sign for another review.
So moved.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Vote Harry. We'd like to appreciate. Thank you. That is going to, that is going to be agenda either as we have. That we have informed in August, so our next meeting will be September nineteenth at six o'clock.
Great.
Enjoy the holidays.
Oh, my God.
Vacation.
Well, Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, Labor Day.
Summer will be over.
Yeah.